...
It was chocolate, yes.
I had a chocolate thing today, but I didn't.
Okay, it is 7:32 and we're slightly late, but I'd like to welcome everybody to the January 25th, 2008 regular meeting of the Village Board of Trustees. If you would stand with me please, pledge allegiance, Will, if you would lead it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, our first order of business tonight will be public comments. Everybody would like to address the board? You can free to come up to the microphone. Good evening.
Good evening. Richard Walters, 20 Elm Street. I'm here to address Jake and Swinley and Jim Clancy, who's not here tonight on snow blowing. I would like to say on behalf of myself and some of my neighbors, I think you guys have been doing an excellent job this year. And the only problem I've noticed is my timing has been extremely bad. I seem to get done just before you come through. But you come through and the street is nice and the sidewalks have been very good too. So I want to thank you guys very much. Thank you.
Thank you. So, yeah, speaking of snow, I'm a public tenant.
What was your name and address?
Honorable Carl. What is the chances of getting the sidewalk around North Ponds plowed? I've had four people come up to me this week and ask about that. I talked with others about it and I know it's a possibility, but I'm not exactly sure how to go about doing that. And I thought that maybe Jake would have an idea. I know, I know it's the town, but...
It's the state at this point, I don't think they...
The town doesn't have sidewalk plows, do they?
No. No, and I don't know if they'd be willing to have discussion or an municipal agreement of some, of some sort to be able to allow that. But that's the only way that we could operate outside of the village, any other property outside of our alleyways is to deal with an municipal agreement or something.
Would that include coming up to 250 onto New York State land?
Go ahead to the bike path there? Bike path is our maintenance jurisdiction.
No, no, not the bike path. The theater, 2104, off of North Avenue that goes west. And, you know, it goes on to North Ponds Park where the parking area is. And, you know, if our sidewalk plow went off of 250, would we have to pay the state, New York State, a fee to plow that area up to?
They should pay us.
No, there's no...
Or could they pay us?
With the sidewalk, with the sidewalk plow, there's a sidewalk there, you know, from 250, if it take you right into the North Ponds, so you could do that portion of it.
Is it village property?
It's the village, it's the village up to, let's say, you have to look at the line. We typically maintain the bike paths in our maintenance jurisdiction along the line driver from 250 to Phillips Road, that portion of it there. We don't usually west of 250. But if that's within the town's maintenance jurisdiction, a lot of times the state will come through, they put in facilities and then was, then revert back or they become, they're still a property to the state, but they become the, within the municipality's maintenance jurisdiction. So if that's, I'm pretty certain that portion of it's all in the town maintenance jurisdiction. So with that same, our great municipal agreement, I would think, we, in contrast, I guess, would cover that, cover that down to there as well.
Is that a big, long process where we could maybe begin the municipal agreement with town or...
Yeah, we could second...
Is there something that you could do to get that ball rolling?
Yeah, I can reach out probably to, it might, people that I deal with, Jill, but it wouldn't really be Jill, the bike path portion would be Jill Herbst, I was superintendent, more likely around North Ponds, the park, correct? So I can reach out to Mark Jaeger, Sanders, interest or things, and those questions.
A lot of people use that, including my wife and her buddy, Scora. I see, you know, pill dog.
Yeah.
It's a dangerous situation, actually.
Oh, yeah.
Because there are an awful lot of senior citizens that you've said that are, you know, that could fall. I don't know how many people have fallen already, I'm sure they have, but...
Well, with the snow there, it's a little softer landing, I don't know.
Yeah? When I fell, it was soft.
So what, what, we talk to, make a note here, talk to Mark and reach out to him.
It would be good if you could back to me about that, see if I can have an answer for these people that are asking me. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
What will happen when the sidewalk extension, which is, takes place, I believe, coming up this next year, occurs along 104, for example, 404? Will they then, by necessity, have to have a sidewalk plow in order to plow that?
We, um, I, I wondered about that just briefly, and I haven't got a final or any sort of a firm answer on that yet. It's certainly something I, I basically said, you know, if there's something, they don't, they don't have sidewalk plows, they typically don't plow sidewalks. So I said, you know, it's something that you're interested in us looking at doing.
Set up a agreement, MOU with that?
Yeah, that we could, you know, it would be helpful, no, because they would, obviously it's a lot longer area and that's typically where the snow's getting pushed back, point of distance, or, I mean, the snow from the roads gets pushed back into the sidewalks. So it's a lot slower, no, than say the residential side streets, where you have different concerns, where the snow is, you know, you got a tree lawn area somewhere, you get kind of side pile and so on. Yeah, whatever, wherever we can work in partnership with, can help, hopefully certainly help us out, whatever.
Would that be a cost?
Yeah.
Somewhat, like they charge the state so much for a mile or whatever, and...
Yeah, it'd just be a similar...
Like it's something that would save them a lot more of purchasing. But maybe this is an introduction to it.
Yeah, it certainly might be, you know, if we're, have a material, if it's similar, if we utilize a town for hauling asphalt or when we're paving, that it's, you know, when there's a truck and the van hours, I guess a truck and, or at least the hours that could give you, it's kind of nonsense. And that's within the existing area, the rest is for places. So we might even be able to operate under that. It's a different device, you know?
I didn't know if the existing municipal agreement... I don't have it memorized, so I couldn't offer an opinion as to whether it's covered or not.
At that, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting, the regular board business, which first of all is approval of the village board meeting minutes from January 11th. You've all had a chance to look over the minutes if they have been sent out, any additions, deletions, or corrections that you'd like to make.
I'd like them in format.
Yes, I'd love them in format.
And I would ask, is there a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
I'd second that.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valpint?
Aye.
Mayor Banks?
Aye.
Motion passed?
Next, Mr. Elder, Historic Preservation Commission, if you would like to address the board. He'd love to meet.
Well, thank you for putting me on the agenda tonight. I have the, Ed Atkinson, who's our chair, has been pressed into action for FEMA down in Florida, where he's currently inspecting buildings that are experiencing some kind of disaster damage. And so he's been gone for a while. And the Historic Preservation Commission has sort of designated me to chair while he's gone, so that's why I'm here tonight, talking about some of the issues that were brought up to me from the Historic Preservation Commission. So, I could, I'd just like to pass this out, so it'll give you, it'll give you an idea of what we're talking about, while we're talking. I do want to thank Don, because I did email him about what we needed to do tonight to address the board. I don't know if you recall his opinion not long ago about, you know, about the Historic Preservation Committee being an independent body or, yeah. But he did give me some guidelines, and I'm here tonight because he said, definitely inform the board what you're doing. So I'm definitely informing the board what we're doing. And I'm also looking to get your comments and suggestions and anything else that might, might help. So there's really two, two issues I'd like to bring before you. First one has been percolating in the group for about four or five months, and that's the desire for the Historic Preservation to commit, to create a Facebook page. And that would be to entirely orient around the idea to inform village residents and those interested about village history about, and the activities of the Historic Preservation Commission. And so we thought, well, probably your next question would be, well, if you're going to establish a Facebook page, what would be your criteria? So our criteria that we would be posting would be past sites of the month. And just to give you a quick overview, 30 seconds, about every month or every other month, the Historic Preservation Commission designates a site of the month. And so we've been doing that for about, I think, almost 10 years. So what we would first like to do is go back and catalog what we've done, try to find where the pictures are, and then put those on the Facebook page. And then, we would also, at the same time, be updating the Facebook page with the sites that we do now. So that people could see what we're doing, it'd be another way to get that information out there. I would also talk, when we designated a site of the month, we also designate, is there a typo? I'm sorry. We also, I can see Will, it's a bad typo too, right? Anyways, so the, I know it's expressions, you know. So anyway, so the, so the, we would, we also talk about why we designated, so people will be able to understand the history behind the structure or the site. We'd also post HP, Historic Preservation Commission events, like garden tours or the tees that we've done. We post our minutes, so people can see what we're doing. Any speakers we could do, we could also post videos the same way, because obviously that's a Facebook application. We would also like to look at maybe posting the 1992 Historic Home Survey, so people have somewhere to go to look at their home in case they're on that list of the over 100 properties. If people have questions about specific properties, they would be able to ask us through the Facebook page, which is difficult now because we only meet once a month. And we don't know if we're actually getting out there to people to know to ask those questions. We'd also like to be able to request historic photos of sites. For instance, I'll give you a great example, we have no photos of the Robb Cemetery in its past. We have current photos, and we have photos since we've been paying attention to it, but no matter how hard we've tried, we haven't been able to get historic photos of that particular location. And it's been around before there was a village, to give you an idea of how much time we have available. We've talked to people that own land here and there, we've talked to people who remember it, but there's no photos we're able to find. This would be a great example of where we could put out there and say, hey, do you have a photo of this? Because we'd love to have one. That would help us understand more about what the site looked like. We'd also like to be able to answer questions about historic people, structures, or locations. So I'll give you an example there briefly, like someone like Ebenezer Cook, who probably most of you don't know much about, but he was an original, original, original guy that came into West Webster, put his home down there, there's a, there's a historic home down there that's not in great shape, that Don Bridge Road office at the bowling alley that he actually built. And he was one of the original settlers, he and his wife, Carl, and Jody Lauer actually did the research, and he and his wife are buried in the, I just think him, we couldn't find his wife, is buried in the cemetery off of Maple Road. So, but those are the kind of things we'd like to be able to give people an overview for. And also, we'd like to be able to give them links to historic resources, so. Anyway, so we would monitor the page and we would make sure we were directly controlling it. The only, you know, so we, obviously we'll get posts, but if there's people going to be doing weird things, we'll make sure that we monitor to take that down the page. Okay? So that's the first item I'd like to talk to you about. The second item was actually something that Trustee Lauer brought up about, the Edna Struck Memorial. I put two little pictures in there, one is of the, of the, an aerial view of the island on Lappin Park, and the other one's a straight on coming from the north to the south. And we would like to, so you probably, for those of you out there in the audience, there's an island, in the middle of Lappin Park is actually the, one of the landmarks in the village, and it is, it was dedicated a while ago in 2006. There's a stone there that has a plaque on it, it's hard to see in the wintertime, but if you ever get a chance, if you want to walk across and look at it, it's dedicated to Edna Struck, who for many years maintained that island. And she did a, she did a great job. There's all kinds of articles about her, if you're ever interested, I have all the articles I could, I'll collect. We'd like to propose to rename that area the Edna Struck Memorial Garden, and we'd like to ask this board to designate the Historic Preservation Commission to lead, to be the lead group to create a plan and implement it for the island. The plan we came up with immediately would be to form a group initially ourselves to care for the island, which is actually not much different than what was done in the past, except that before, it was a group of neighbors on Lappin Park. And it might be again, we would be the ones initiating getting that group going. We'd like to do some tasteful plannings in there, I mean, not to eat, but rather to look nice. Leading and overall care of the, of the site. We'd like to ensure the current plaque is always visible. We'd like to make sure there's periodic publicity of the area, and finally, to make it a perpetual agenda item for the Historic Preservation Commission, so we're always taking care of it, it's in the front of our, our thoughts. And I gave you a little bit of a history, this is very bridged, of the, from the Edna Struck Memorial Park, Lappin Park Island by Richard Batesing. He wrote that article, I think it was in 2006, and I took out the, I kind of took out the real basics of it and gave it to you there, so if you've not read it before, at least you can get a gist of who she was and what she did and what was happening on Lappin Park. I don't know if all of you know that there was a baseball field in there? And there were some of the, some of the houses are sitting on first base, or one of the houses are sitting on fair space. It's possible the island was actually like a home base or the pictures mounted, I'm not sure. But the, but anyways, it's got a lot of history, which is the reason I think the village, you know, designated it as a landmark, and it's the reason why we'd like to see it, a group boss dedicated to making sure it's preserved. So that's, that's my pitch to you. So, do you have any, I guess our first question is, since we probably could set up the Facebook page, according to Don, without getting too much permission from you, but we want to, and we want to know that you're okay with it, so is that something we could begin to look at? Because we have, we have the talent, our group, to actually set up a Facebook page, and then we would begin to post to it, so that people could respond, so.
I personally don't have any particular problem with it. I think it's a good idea, the more that we promote history here within the village. I know that the town does, I don't know how many different sites or buildings in the course of a year, each year, but I don't think we do that. But this would be a good way to promote a lot of the history here within the village.
We do, we do designate the sites, and when we do that, I don't know if you've ever seen the site?
Well, I mean, actual, the, yeah. I know we have the site of them, that kind of thing.
Right, yeah. But we don't do the historic homes, although at one point, there was an historic home tour. And we've talked about doing that again, but the, but the effort involved is, there's a lot of effort, and it's going to take a lot of organization, so. Something we could do again, because there certainly is the homes to do it.
Well, and even when we did the calendar, probably we did the calendar, I mean, that was well received. And we talked about doing one, we did it for just front porches, but we were talking about doing it for one of the barns that we have in the village. So, I mean, that's something to, that we could think about for 2018, but that means we got to get a photographer with that. That's the sort of thing. Because then you get your name out.
When we had any kind of village gatherings, we always had our various books out, everything,
we used to. I mean, that hasn't happened in a while, but...
And we want to, we understand that people have changed how they process information, you know, getting to meetings is more difficult than maybe it was at one time, but we, but obviously Facebook and websites, but even more so Facebook now, it's taken that place where people can educate themselves, so that's the reason why we're thinking this is a good path forward.
Just wanted to make sure, Edna's okay though, right?
Because I spelled your name wrong?
No, Edna Struck Memorial Garden, just wanted to make sure.
Oh, that's what you were laughing about, got it.
My witness was a yore.
He was doing a pun, okay, I'm sorry.
The second thing is, have you ever thought of, like, doing like a virtual tour of these houses, like going with a camera and do a virtual tour and then putting it on...
That's a great idea.
I had you great idea.
But no, we didn't talk about that, but we certainly could, because...
I gotta interfere with that, because I don't know how many people would allow us to do that.
Well, but it's not, but you didn't say that...
Because of, you know, I mean, if somebody goes on Facebook and says, hey man, look at, you know, and then they're going to the house and something terrible happens, I...
Well, that's true.
I know, we thought about that.
It's a security thing.
Even with, you know, when we were doing that...
Yeah, we have to, if we entertain something like that, maybe it would be an exterior kind of thing, where we could exterior, look at the building on its exterior, but maybe not so much like that, so.
I have a question also, as far as the Edna Struck Park.
Yes.
I would propose if it's the smallest green space in Monroe County.
I, I don't know about that, but it certainly...
It could be, it could be recognized as it, noted.
Have you researched that issue, Carl? So you're certain it's the smallest green space in Monroe County?
I proposed it.
What do you mean you proposed it? I don't understand what it was then.
I'm going to guess that it's the smallest...
Well, you can't, you can't go and...
Well, it needs to be researched, I had not, I just saw it tonight.
All right.
I didn't put much thought into it, but I'm saying that I, it is my guess that it is.
You know, we have, we have an outstanding county legislator in Matt Turp.
It's actually, it's a traffic island, you know how many traffic islands there probably are in Monroe County?
Yeah, there's quite a few, though.
Yeah.
But like I was saying, we have...
They're not all green space.
Well, it's got grass planted on it, so that's why it's green space, you know? There's probably a lot of them that are in grass planted on it.
Not to try to make peace, but maybe the way to do this is like this, we could go to our great, we go to our great legislator, Matt Turp, and maybe he could do the research for us, because Matt's a great guy, he'd probably be willing to do it.
Matt likes to announce, yeah.
And if you want to talk about the county, he's the guy to go to, because he's our county legislator.
Good.
It sounds good.
So Matt, if you watch this, because you might, we might need you. Okay, so if it's already through, I don't hear a lot of opposition, so we'll begin to get that process for the Facebook page done.
Do you intend, do you intend to post all this stuff on the village website too?
Coordinate with Joe and we'll have a link.
Okay, um, we, we...
There should be, we should.
If there isn't one, create a Historic Preservation Commission page website.
There's a, there's a drop down, we don't really know how that, honestly, we've never, we've not really investigated that entirely, because there's a drop down on the village's page, but it doesn't seem to have a lot of application to it. And doesn't mean, doesn't mean your ideas aren't good, you just have to do a little bit more research.
We're hoping, we're hoping you can update our website.
Yeah, and that might be a great opportunity, so...
I don't know what the audience for Facebook is. My guess is, is that probably a lot of the people that are interested in historic sites in the village, probably don't look at Facebook.
Well, I don't know, might be surprised.
It is starting to change.
Facebook's really, really popular.
In 2015, it was 1.3 million views, billion, billions of people.
And it goes through all demographic groups, it's not...
United States.
Well, we're demographic, you're having a small...
Yeah, the idea here, exactly. I mean, we don't have to argue about the particulars, we can just kind of agree that having the website, the information is good too.
Oh.
Yeah, we should do both, right? One doesn't exclude the other. And Heather, if you're talking about updating the website, that's a great opportunity for us, because maybe we can, maybe you can keep us in mind when you're looking at how to develop pages.
Absolutely. That'd be a great idea. And you could put highlights on your pictures right off of the page.
Right.
That'd be great.
Okay, excellent. As far as the garden goes, if you guys want to give it a thought, maybe we can come back to it at the next meeting, but what we probably want is just some kind of designation, that we are able to do that, I guess, so. Because that's what we're really looking for, is this board saying, that's, that's your project, and we'll take it from there, so.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, yeah. And we love having, we love having Judy at our meetings, and she gives us great input. And Carl, even though he's not at our meetings, he gives me great input outside of the meetings. And so it's wonderful to have that input and all that going on as well, so.
So this island that is historic is significant to the village?
Well, it was designated as an historic landmark, so in order to do that, I have to answer the question, it would be yes.
So the Historic Preservation Commission at some time in the past designated it as a landmark?
The village board did. The village board has...
Historic Preservation Drive before the board.
How does Historic Preservation Commission...
We can't, according to the, I don't, I think if you look at the code, although, well, we can talk about that later, but I think, I think if you look at the code, only this board can designate it as a historic landmark. Because we have to prepare, we have to actually prepare an application for the board to pass to do that. And we, and we just did that for Robb Cemetery, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So we have to prepare, what we do is we, and this may be wrong, but in the past, we've prepared the application, place it in front of the village board, the village board then reviews it, and then passes it as a local landmark. And so far, everything the village board has passed has been a municipal piece of property, basically, you know, connected directly to the village, but, so.
Yeah, that was back in the Jack Judge days, when we started...
Yes, Jack did this, in fact, there's pictures of Jack actually cleaning up the, that I have, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so anyways, like I said, moving forward, I don't know what your feelings are, but if you, if you could give us a motion or a general, you know, verbal go for it, it's your project, that's what we're looking for, so whenever you feel that's valuable, we'll, we're meeting on, we're meeting in February on the 2nd Tuesday, sorry. And we will, so we'd love to be able to start forming some plans as to what the island will look like, and we want, we want to keep the village board in the loop, it's not what we don't. We just want to make sure that you're okay with us, you know, starting to do that, and we can look at, you know, what the plannings, some plannings might look like, and we don't, we're not asking you to give us any more money, you already give the Historic Preservation Commission money, so we would utilize that as part of our budget.
So, actually, Peter, if you look at the code, it's the Historic Preservation Commission that solely designates landmarks and historic businesses?
Fine, you're right.
The village board is, is not the village board's job to do it. That was, that was one of the reasons why I said you should move a little square on the organizational chart, separate to like planning, it's only because it really stands on itself. So if in fit...
Clearly, we need an attorney.
Well, you should look in the past, because if in fit, they only made a recommendation, they didn't actually designate it, maybe you want to redo that process, so technically you do it correctly.
Yeah, because I thought we did not have control right from the very beginning.
No, you don't, this board doesn't. It's all up to the...
No, 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 Historic Preservation, I started from Historic Preservation, and I didn't think we had, the way it was written, that was back Jack Judge's...
I can, I can read it to you, because I've got it right here on my phone.
And it's ours, the one for here?
It says, it says designation, it's section 175-48, designation of landmark of historic district. Designation of an individual property as a landmark or as part of a historic preservation district is accomplished through the owner making application to the Webster Village Historic Preservation Commission, and the commission approving the owner's application. Period.
Right, okay, and, okay, let's...
It doesn't say then you make or...
All right, now, to be a holiday, we got this mixed up, it went, because the village has always been the applicant, so you were actually at the meeting where we designated the Robb Cemetery, and we asked you to be there, and we did go through the correct process there. So I just reversed the process in my own head here without realizing it. So what we've done is, we've prepared the application for the village, the village board has signed off on it, because they're the owners. Then we hold a public hearing, which you were at, and thank you, by the way, and then we, and then we passed a motion to declare a landmark. So the process that we went through with Robb Cemetery is assumingly the process they went through in 2006, what they had struck, I don't, I don't remember what it was called now, so.
Okay.
So you were, so you're right.
Then they did it, I know we did the Rab one right.
Right, so we did it, so I believe we did...
This one was done that way, that's, and that was done right too.
You did it, yes.
You did the research, the village...
Right, we did the research... Right, we did the research.
The village to the village, the board, the board then approached the historic commission.
In effect, in effect, the village was the applicant, right, in effect, it was the applicant, yeah.
So it is currently designated.
Yes, right, so the, so we've got, there's two local landmarks in the village, there's the Edna's struck island, which we'd like to rename, and then there's the Rob Cemetery, or which is actually, we think, called Pioneer Cemetery or Rob Cemetery, something like that, so... Uh, but we, um, so that's really, yes, so Don, thank you for clarifying that.
The only other thing is, is there a cost involved, because you're wanting to plant it, so you're gonna buy...
There would be, there might be a cost involved, we also might just get people to donate, but we have, but the village board has been very generous in giving us about a thousand dollars, giving, allocating about a thousand dollars a year to the Old Tour Preservation Commission, so we figured what we might be able to do is break off a portion of that for those kind of things. We could work with Jake, because he already knows how to get good plants, so, he doesn't want to...
I think some of the, some of the people that have been on the garden tour might be interested in donating, cutting a piece of their...
Yep, and we've, and that's why we wanna get, that's why we wanna have, that's why we wanna be the lead group to do this, so we can start energizing people in the house, yeah.
Well, there's a lot of those, you say, they're on top of the board.
So yes and yes.
My, my point is simply, when we present, I assume you annually present a proposed budget to this board?
We do.
Yes.
We've done it for the last three years.
So you just have a separate thing?
We will.
I mean, they approve this for the Edna's struck, you know, Memorial Gardens, 250 bucks or whatever you think it might cost.
Yeah, exactly. Like I said, Jake knows where to get the plants at a, at a good price, so we can utilize him as our resource. Like I said, give it some thought, let us know, and, uh, okay?
Aye. I'm all for it.
Aye.
Aye.
Absolutely.
All right, then, we'll proceed.
Proceed.
All right.
Coordinate with Heather on the Facebook.
You got it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
All right, item three, um, I didn't ask, um, sign off on them, but I have looked them over. Resolution to approve the claims and warrants, has everybody taken a look at that? Carl, I think I saw yours, and I, and Jude.
Yes.
We have, uh, I have any questions, Jake, about one, and I'm gonna need, um, verify for me what the town was, but another one is, it popped up for both Judy and I looking through these, was that Constellation increased their charge to the village of Webster by 170%?
Constellation energy?
Yes. And so that was my first look at that, because Christina put me a note on that, um, piece of paper showing that she was amazed that Constellation did that. That's the January service at 47?
Yeah, it went up to about seven cents a kilowatt hour, was two point something cents a kilowatt, kilowatt hour. Um, and I looked into some of the other rates too, and it seems, I don't have it with me, but it seems that we would've been on a fixed rate, we would've been paying six, like six, six, almost six and a half cents a kilowatt hour along on a fixed rate, so we wouldn't have enjoyed that. Two cents a kilowatt hour, two point six, or whatever it was. So I'm gonna look back at the bills, but it did, it was a considerable jump, but that's, I guess, what everybody did, we're on market, market prices, versus the, uh, you know, versus a fixed price.
Who are the other, I recall getting that letter at my house, but there are other distributors of electric that we can look back on.
We're looking into it right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I gave her some information on one, and I had Christina look up the contract, and the contract was good through May 2014, and from there on, we've been on a month-to-month, so, I mean, nobody has really looked at it, so...
2014?
2000, May 2014, yes.
So that's, uh...
Yeah.
It's a considerable amount of money that we can take a look at.
I've also reached out to some of the other villages to try and help them, they use, so I'm waiting for your back from that as well.
And then I gave you a, a listing of the ones that were up near Buffalo, that that...
Yes.
That's on the back of that one, yeah.
So maybe we should hold off on...
Well, yeah, I think we've gotta research it, I mean, we've gotta figure out if it's worth it or not worth it, because I mean, a lot of people just...
We have to make the payment, yeah.
Yeah, we don't have a choice, but I wasn't signing up on it, because I didn't, wasn't happy with what it said, and was very surprised that we, we knew anything. And I know there's a lot of companies out there doing this right now.
We removed the Constellation, didn't we?
Yeah.
That room, Jamie, I know Jamie did something at one point.
Yeah, she switched it to them, and before that, I'm not sure of the name.
Yeah, we had Integris, Nova Light Energy, Direct Gas, or Energy, um...
Energetics?
Energetics.
Yeah.
There's, I think we've been about eight different ones, and, you know, you know, they gotta eat too, I think they're not, you know, they're in the business to make money, so if you get on a fixed price and you're not gonna experience these, when the price is low, you're not gonna experience those savings either. It's maybe, you know, somebody certainly could do it better, me, I mean, I eat my house in oil, and I sometimes try to buy oil that, hey, I think it might be going up or it might be going down, I've never got there, right? If I think it's gonna go down, I buy only half a tank, and then next time I go to buy it, it's way higher, and I said, oh, I should've got the full tank when it was lower, and trying to guess. But there's people that can make and lose portions on energy markets and computers and things, and buying and selling and trading them. I can't get an oil tank right, so I don't know, if we're looking at energy, they're, they're all making money, and they wouldn't be in the business.
Well, of course, nobody wants to be in business and not make money, so we should definitely shop. But we should at least try to figure out, I mean, 170, yeah, or something.
Yeah, but that's what the market did, because we're on market rates, and it's set by a company, I think, or it's reported by a company, a PJM or something like that, that does a, um, I tried looking up and seeing what their reports are, apparently have to pay for their reports, um, and I know Chris did call RGD as well, and that was the same exact, whatever rate we were paying, and that was the same exact rate.
Yeah.
Uh, RGD does our transmission, so we get two bills, they're always taking care of the transmission, with the electrical supply comes from Constellation, and the supply charge was the same, you know, if we were with RGD now, it'd be the exact same on a market rate, and it depends on the service classification area too. Uh, the sewage treatment plant, I think that one was a sewage treatment plant, that's a service classification two, I think it is. Um, where residential might be like a seven, or it might be a five, or, here's...
So is it, is it worth doing this, or investigating it, or should you just say, well, just never mind, let's just...
Well, I think it's certainly, you know, it's always, I think, worth looking into, but I think every single one of them is gonna tell you that they're gonna save you a whole bunch of money, and it's the best deal, and they're all buying it in the same spot, it's all going through the same exact lawyers.
Isn't it all regulated by the Public Service Commission anyhow?
It is, and I think what I was looking at is more the fees and taxes and stuff.
It depends on where they, where they can buy their electricity from. Off the grid, you know, if you get the hydroelectric power that the state controls, that's cheaper than getting it from coal-fired plants, or, you know, they're talking about now, you can get it from Canada, you know, for downstate, because of the closeness of their power plants, and frankly, I think you're gonna find it, six to one, half a dozen of them.
Well, that's what I...
I don't think you're gonna...
I think they just, uh...
I did ask Christina today. I did ask Christina today if we could just pay through RGD, just have one check and not have two payments, if they are the same, so we'll look into that too.
Yeah, I just don't know.
Yeah, like, my analysis actually switched back to RGD, because it was cheaper.
Yeah.
One of the things I think where you can do it, if you can buy as part of a plan or an aggregate thing, where you buy, you know how much you're gonna use, and there, you can buy it, you know, whatever the, whatever they call it, you buy it six months ahead of time, you're gonna use this, like, whoever represents you or represents a group can buy it ahead of time, at this point, this is what you're gonna need, then if it's over, and they're paying a lot, and they're taking a lot of use, um, I think you can, there's some, I don't know if that's what Inesco is, or, um, some other type of organization, but I know there's some way, but it's, it's basically, they play in the stock market, I think, you know?
That's kind of what I...
Which isn't that too bad this year, they have about 4% or something, right? Not 170.
Hey, I'm surprised that the Public Service Commission would allow it, they had, they had it, I believe, because he had to go to the firm.
Well, I think they've, they've got terrorists in their published, we can look at the PSC, have it service classification too, you can see, I think they way even have their rates out, but it's not gonna be market rates, obviously.
No.
One thing I did try calling Chris, now that I think about, and I gotta try to follow up with her too, there was something in a, it wasn't our Constellation contract, but there was, you know, there was reference to something at 6.6, or 0.0635 a kilowatt hour, and I don't know if that was just an other system charges beyond the supply itself, but I wanted to see if there's, and one that I did see, it was kind of a generic one, but it did say that there was a cap, but I wanna, you know, we gotta see what the definition is too.
What other motion is going to pay the claims and warrants?
I'll make that motion.
I'll sign it.
Trustee Belkay?
Aye.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Trust, trustee Lindsey? Here, bud.
Aye.
Won't you pass?
Item number four, financial statements for December. If anybody has any questions on it, have a chance to look them over. Maybe you'll look at some of the very high percentages used so far.
Yeah.
Many of them are year commitments that have been fulfilled, but a number of them also are other things that were approached.
Yeah, how, we went way over on signs, what do we have extra?
Uh, which...
Safety signs, 100% as well as...
Page three, 01033620408.
Those are, that's under safety personnel, that's for, we addressed that, uh, last year or a couple meetings ago, those are the signs I had to order for vacant properties, abandoned properties.
Oh, oh, so, yes, yes.
Yep.
That they are reusable?
Oh, yes. The building in fact is very careful how we install, and then remove some.
Any other questions? Then item five, it has been brought up, and suggested that the village board changed its meeting hour from 7:30 to 7 o'clock. That, along with the planning board, as well as the zoning board, they would make a change also from 7:30 to 7 o'clock. It's been asked to have some discussion, it looks like there's been some research, if you check the next page, um, start times for village board meetings across the various villages, Brockport starts at seven, Churchville starts at six, East Rochester, Fairport, Hailor Falls, Spencerport, all start at seven, and Hilton starts at five o'clock, and we are the only village that starts at 7:30. It has been asked, requested, that we consider, uh, starting at seven o'clock, for the planning board, the zoning board, as well as the board, um, the village board of trustees. And I would put that out, I think that there is tied to that, as I've had some discussion with Heather in the office, they would need to change, we would need to change the hours for Thursday, uh, we would need to change, instead of the passports ending, taking any passports at 6:30, so that they can process and be done at seven o'clock when they close, we would need to end the process at six o'clock, and that still extends an hour and a half beyond the normal time for people to come in. It has been indicated that there are not a great number of people that are coming in between 6:00 to 6:30, and, uh, so that they could then process, they could be done at the office at 6:30, and that would allow Heather, and/or Christina, or Joe to be able to, um, get together what they need for either the planning board, zoning board, or for the trustee board. So I open this up for discussion, how do you feel about it? Would you be in favor of a change? If so, then I would, uh, I would look at addressing this, um, because we will have to amend the organizational meetings, we would have to amend that, but how do you feel about that?
I think very...
I don't know, Mark.
What about, has anybody talked to anybody on planning and zoning?
I believe that there has been a comment from Chris, Mark, in general, are they representing, or?
They've wanted to move it as early as possible for a while, and, um, so they're very in favor, and Joe recently sent an email to her people for her boards, and they have, we're waiting on responses, but they've been asking for it for a long time.
Yeah.
Don, what do you think, I mean, would you be, I don't, would you be able to get here?
I'm usually here before you.
Oh, one on each side. Very good, very good. I'm sorry, yeah.
It's strong, surely.
I think it probably, probably was 7:30, because that's what the town was always, 7:30, and they were just...
Yeah.
You know, Webster meetings were always at 7:30. So you might screw up some residents, because it's been for 7:30 for so long, that you're gonna get people that are gonna show up, you know, at 7:30 thinking it was at seven, but 7:30...
Well, we can look at the website.
On our website, if we can post it in Webster, here it is.
Yes.
That was something I also wanted to make sure, we don't wanna rush this, we have a lot of areas that we need to post it, including passport, there's a couple sites where our hours are listed.
Yeah.
So maybe, maybe like, end of February or early March, I mean, we could always, we could always start our meeting at seven, and have the office hours remain the same until we're ready, till every outlet has been explored, to make sure Facebook's updated and everything, and we'll put something in the paper, and it should be okay.
Good idea.
Yeah, okay.
When's the annual meeting? It is in July, though. Because of the change of voting, um, to June, the beginning of the year is July.
So if you are in favor of it, maybe we could...
But we would amend it before then, we can't amend it before then.
Go for a March 1st start date?
Or even later, you can take your time, gradually hit it out there, so people know it's at seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, but by March, I mean, that's, you know...
It's only like a month away, a month and a half.
Well, I know, but if you got website, your Facebook, you got it all up, you got the website, everything.
I think March is first.
Okay.
And still be interested in, in hearing also from the responses, because the planning has...
Okay, I'll make sure those are forwarded out to you.
I know that Jerry has already indicated that he is in favor of it, to make that change, so...
I'll make sure those responses are sent.
I'll, um, I'll sit with you in terms of looking at the organizational meeting, and what it was that we stated there, and how we can change it.
Okay.
Pointing to a resolution. You know, it's seeming to be a late earlier 4:30, so I'm ready at seven, and...
At 6:30?
Four. At 6:30. Yeah, that's right. All right, uh, next, we had a request from, um, DPW for authorization for James Scott to attend the backflow testing recertification course, March 30th, 2018, at a total cost of $205. Um, I believe that it is local, and it would not then require overnight for, um, meals, so this is the cost, I believe, of the recertification class. Where is it taking place, Jake?
It's at, it's MCC, but it's a, it's a building, I think it's on West Henryana Road, they've been, uh...
At the state?
Suspension Campus or whatever, yeah.
Not at the D.O., no, no.
Yeah, just pass it through, wait, and then they said you all were there. So does he use his own car?
No, he, he would use a village vehicle to get out there and back, but he's, um, and he, he does all our backflow tests, we have one, you know, down in DeWitt Road, uh, obviously down with the sewage treatment plant up here, there's a couple that he does all the testing for, he also, they're in municipal agreement with the school, he also does testing for them as well, um, yeah, so it works out, it's, I would expect it's generally less than the cost of one of the backflow tests that we would have to do anyway, so...
So I would entertain a motion to authorize the payment of $205 for James Scott to attend the backflow testing certification course on March 30th, 2018.
I'm gonna make that motion.
I'll sign it.
I'm going to make that motion.
Trustee Lindy?
Aye.
Trustee Flower?
Aye.
Trustee Bucky?
Aye.
Mayor Byss?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Don, do you have anything for us at the moment? I do not at the moment. Maybe a little later. Code enforcement, our annual report. We have anticipated this. The night has finally come.
You're right. Okay, I don't think I need to get into too much detail. The multicolor amazing chart should speak for itself. You'll notice in two thousand sixteen, or two thousand seventeen, there was a significant drop in several different types of permits. Some remain basically the same, but that's because the majority of the permits for North Ponds and those areas there, and also with the addition to Maplewood Nursing Home, those were all made in two thousand sixteen, even though I'm doing the inspections and everything for two thousand seventeen. So I expect this to change this year when Brittany Woods starts to take into gear, so.
Speaking of Brittany Woods, if I can interrupt this for a moment.
Oh, sure, sure.
Are they intending soon to give a notification to the board, a letter of credit, or whatever it was that they had to present to us, or do they not need to do that?
The last correspondence I have with them was with myself, with Jack Newholmes, and with Don here because Mark Van Etz had sent us a form, a format of what we may be looking for in a letter of credit. So I sent it off to Don. I said, I know this isn't a letter of credit, but it's a sample. They're looking to see, is this the type that they're looking for? Don sent an email back in the affirmative, so I sent it back. I said, yeah, I said, just so you know, we know this isn't the real thing. We're waiting for the real thing. They said, yeah, we understand that. I don't know where they are in the process to tell you the truth, because I haven't heard from them. I know that Jake and I are going to be having a pre-construction meeting, and at that meeting, I'm sure a lot of these things will be addressed. So I still need a sign set planned as well, so.
When is that due? When's the meeting?
It's thirtieth.
But we...
The end of this month.
Would you like to come?
On the thirtieth, is that?
Tuesday at ten a.m. Yeah.
And you just needed a short agreement that you would sign on behalf of the village and the developer would sign, just indicating what the letter of credit covers, the things that they're supposed to do.
Sure.
Which could be the, you can incorporate the engineer's estimate.
I don't, I sign that. I don't, I don't think I sign that.
The agreement, it, well, it format that he presented, it was from ESL, I think.
Yeah, it was.
It referenced some agreement, which is correct. Someone's got to put together some agreement.
I think it's the highest ranking office that has assigned, or you mind Jake to do it?
The highest.
The way that the man in the chair.
Just try to have all the legislation signed. Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate you asking. I haven't heard anything about it.
Yeah. Have there any questions?
About that?
For the TV's going, by the way?
Yes.
Okay.
We were out of the way when...
On your, on your paragraph here versus all other.
Yeah.
I think that's the only one that reads ahead. What's all other encompassed?
That would be sheds, fences, decks, pools, generators, hot tubs, anything other than first, one and two family homes, apartment buildings, commercial construction. This would also include additions, like remodeling, subtractions, demolitions, things like that. Sign permits, temporary sign permits, all of that.
Great.
Much obliged.
Did we hear anything about the block grant that, for Main Street?
What, what do you look for?
The Charlie Fitzsimmons.
Yeah, the Charlie, the grants that Matt...
Matt Chadfield was working on for Charlie Fitzsimmons.
Oh, Don, I haven't heard anything. I provided them some information, but that's about it.
I believe that it's in February, that bill.
February.
What are you hearing on the filling station? They were supposed to be done around Thanksgiving.
I have to call her back. Yeah, well, we had two cancellations already for a C of O, and so she called me again because, that's just been an interesting process. I don't want to go into detail with that, but needless to say, you know, it's getting contractors there on time, contractors not showing up when they're supposed to show up, and they come in next week, and problems with installations that went bad and having to go back and redo it. Not, no fault of the owners, it's just the contractors they had. And so, last phone calling, they're ready for a C of O. So Rob and I just have to make an appointment with the owner, Wendy, to go in there and do the final inspection.
There was a blurb on Facebook today about moving the opening up again, or back again.
Yeah, because it goes, what, twenty-fifth is when they wanted to do it.
It's supposed to be tomorrow.
He moved it out again due to unforeseen things.
Yeah.
An L T of O.
Thank you.
So, and I appreciate, in second Mr. Walter's comments regarding the guys, the effort that they've been putting in, the job they've been doing, and a really good job this year. And certainly, it's almost forget, the last two years have been too terrible. We've got all this snow each of those years in about twelve-hour period. This year, it's, it's not like that. So they've been doing a great job and keeping things clear and getting right back out, you know, after working a long day, coming right back in. They, maybe the next day on a shift to try to clear the snow off Main Street and keep that to build it for all the businesses and the residents and stuff there, too. So they're doing a great job.
We in good shape with salt? Have we used up the reserve that we have from last year of the district?
Yeah, yeah. The last year, what we had in, in the bin and the deliveries that we've had to date, I believe we're at a hundred and two percent of our allocation. We typically, historically, have gotten three hundred, three hundred tonne a year. I think this year we went to three, I want to see if it's three and a quarter. I didn't bring that with me. For a way of even being two seventy-five. I know we altered it by about twenty-five tonne, which is a huge amount. Xerox, I know years ago talking with them, they use twenty-one hundred tonne a year. Our town uses, I think, just under five thousand. So our three hundred's not a lot, but we use a sensible, sensible salty model. We've got that luxury with lower speed streets, so we can do hills and intersections and curves, and that's basically what we try to do, which was, does, in result in the snowpack being on the street, especially when it's, you know, below ten for two weeks straight. But it melts sometimes when you get those long, long periods of cold. It melts kind of funny, and you've got, you know, chunks coming out when we go back and warms up the top, and one spot might soften up more than another. But the proof of the answer to your question, so we've gotten all of our allocation so far. I don't, unfortunately, I don't think we've gotten all our snow yet. We're guaranteed supply up to a hundred and fifty percent of what our allocation is. We're guaranteed the price up to a hundred and twenty percent of our allocation, and we're supply up to a hundred and fifty, and then after that, there's an increase, and then it's market rate. And when we've gotten to that point, a couple of years ago, we used over five hundred tonne. At that point, we were getting close to their stockpile. So we worked with the school district and the town and got some from them, that they had already purchased where there was extra, and then just paid them back with a loan the following year, the next time when we got a loader at the end of the season, rather than paying the, I think the market rate then was like eighty-seven dollars a tonne versus about forty-four or something. Oh, yeah, Will and I are going to be working together on a community development block grant, funding that we do every year in the, in the meeting in January, and then it's usually due about the middle of February, the application. Last year, we put in for the sidewalks on Laffle Park and Park Avenue, we got a portion of what we're going to need, about fifty, about fifty-eight thousand out of the eighty-two requested. That eighty-two request included some of our funds and labor, you know, above that to be able to replace those. Typically, what we do in those circumstances is we'll look through for a phase two, you know, go as far as at fifty-eight or so will take us, and then go for a phase two to try to extend what we did. So maybe we're going to try to do Park Avenue. One of the things we're going to start working there pretty soon. North Avenue is obviously going to be pretty busy this year, because that's when everything's happening, but that's a contractor doing that as well, but we're going to be fornading a lot with them. We've got surveys and stakeouts done, or stakeouts done, like say, Park Avenue, we're in the north side, and we're going to be doing the sidewalks. There's beautiful trees there. Park Avenue, to me, is one of the prettiest streets in the village when you're driving down, especially with the tree canopy. And I figure I'll get beat up pretty bad if, if we go down and cut all those trees down. I think the better approach or what we might do there, obviously, we don't want sidewalk wandering all over the place and looking goofy either. Where there's trees, and if we can shift it, rather than what we typically would do is go beyond, or go towards the street, if we're going to make them five foot wide instead of four, go towards the street. There's trees that are planted pretty close to the sidewalk there. What we might try to do is go on the backside, and that's going to require an easement that we've prepared before with stormwater things or storm drains and other sidewalks and this or that, so we can, we can talk to homeowners, specific homeowners there. I think that's the stakeouts are going to tell us how much room we have behind the sidewalk exactly. We, I don't think we have quite a foot, but if we got to cross over, you know, take a couple, not take a couple feet, but request a couple feet, and I'm guessing everybody's a big fan of those trees on that street. Unfortunately, they're not going to be there forever, obviously, but if we cut down one side of them, I will be here forever either, I'm pretty sure.
No.
So I drive over that way. I don't want to get rocks thrown at me, so, so, and we'll see what we did. Obviously, I'll work it down then at that time if that's in the board meeting, and keep it a loop and see what we have, where to go with that, so. I just had a couple other things real quick. I wouldn't say that, but it's my calling. Barry's Pub has put in an application, or a road closure request. Typically, we don't get a lot of sidewalk closure requests outside of, you know, a large event or things like that, or a temporary, if somebody's working on something that's part of a permit. They're, they're looking for St. Patrick's Day to extend out and close down a portion of the sidewalk. I just wanted to, you know, throw to you guys and see what your thoughts are, if there's any questions or concerns or things to think about. One of, right now, we're looking at is, the process for the road closure request is usually if it's up in the village, it'll come to be for a road that I forward to the town highway. Town highway sends it to the police, the police sends it to the park marshal, then he gets back, provides all the emergency services, that this road's going to be closed, or whatever the case may be. This is just a sidewalk. We're looking at making sure traffic, possibly, you know, definitely want to make sure pedestrian traffic can still get by there in some way, but also have something that's going to protect the patrons from the traffic, you know, so they're not stepping out onto the curb right onto the sidewalk, or right onto the street. So I'm looking at theirs, they have like water filled jersey barriers and that, they can set up and kind of make a little perimeter. I'm pretty sure, too, with the liquor laws and some of those, when they're, when they're serving outside, you have to maintain, it doesn't have to be that fancy. You can do a snow fence, but that's not going to stop any vehicles or stop people from falling into the road either, so. We want to certainly look at that. I'm waiting to hear back from the, the other, the police in the, in the highway side, if they have any questions, concerns, or requirements that they might have.
Yeah, how much did they want to close on?
Um, we're, I've got to get, I started the process just with the permit and forwarded that along. They said, you know, basically in front of their place on the west Main Street. My understanding right now was just the Main Street side.
So it wouldn't be from Perks, north, and then down along?
Not unless something's changed, and I think their thought was to keep things out. But now we're going to have a jersey barrier, that's a couple feet. We're going to try to keep some pedestrian through, which is, you know, a couple more feet. There's only about eight feet, especially along their fence, so it might just give them another, might be a lot for a couple more feet by the time you get it all said and done, so. But maybe they'll do a couple spots, maybe they'll shift it over somewhere else. I gotta see what the, what the request is going to be, or how it's going to finalize. We talked to Jessica today. We're going to try to sometime get together. I want to hear more from the other places before we go too deep into it, and she's going to start looking up what, you know, renting those jersey barriers would be, you know, the ones they fill with water and that.
Yeah.
And then see, then we're going to plot a layout of that, and then see, so. And the only other thing, too, is the lights. I just couldn't know if anybody, I know it's been a month or a couple months now, I think, the lights aren't full, or anybody...
We love them.
Yeah.
I love them.
We've had some great comments from everybody that go ahead and pursue switching the rest of the village-owned lights. It's the post-op lights. This switch nose over LED. There's an assertive sentence. I think that was our first number, sir, but the light's Clancy, plus it's cheap heart. He's even cheaper than me sometimes, I think. He's, they're typically just under a hundred dollars, those lights, or just under eighty, actually. You know, it's for those type of cord gobbins, replacement bulbs, and he's got it for forty-six dollars a piece. And you go up there and switch the ballast, and there's another sensor you got to put in that's about an eleven-dollar thing. So, oh, it's about fifty bucks a pole, fifty-five, sixty bucks a pole for the material, but he'll change those. There's about another hundred and quarter, so it's going to give us to do six, fifteen, about seventy-five, probably eight thousand bucks. It will work with Chris if there's enough, you know, in the budget this year, or I don't, we're not going to save that in that single year. Energy only portion of the lights, switching LEDs, but it's something we can switch around. We're going to, we'll request that. If not, we'll put it in, you know, as a request for the next budget year and try and get those. But I think they, they go from like a hundred and, hundred, a hundred and fifty, a hundred watt high-pressure sodium bulb to thirty-six watt, and I think that, so.
Does anybody?
Yeah, so then we're disconnecting the ballast. The ballast, I guess, they, they have a draw on the ballast. It's about thirty-eight watts. I guess when you fill it up, the assertive paperwork, you had that type of, that hundred watt high-pressure sodium, it takes to switch them over. It removed, it showed a hundred, thirty-eight watt savings, so.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Has anybody talked to the residents to see how they like them?
Yeah, Clancy's gone up and down that, that street, and he said, everybody loves them, so.
I've had a couple of emails from residents that like them.
Oh, good. It's, I think they used to, you know, we did a lot of work on that, too, in finding the thing. We were traveling to, we were heading to some training or something one time. We went out real early while it was still dark. I was, it was summertime. Went out somewhere, East Rochester and somewhere else in Pittsburgh. We were driving around like a couple of creeps, and it was like one o'clock in the morning. We wanted to get an idea of what these lights looked at. The one residential street, and they were just way too bright, but, you know, we were able to go see what things looked like, and ask for this, try this, try that. And I think you went through about eight, seven or eight different bulbs. They tried different spots.
Yeah, I appreciate that. That was a very good thing.
Yeah, because their lighting is...
Pittsburgh is bright.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Will they then be the same on Main?
Main Street, I think we're talking about, this is slightly brighter in the resident, or the, excuse me, the commercial area, you know, to help with the commercial and the security and the safety and things like that around there. But with the residential, and that, we're going to try to follow.
I like it.
No, no, those are something else. It's very, it turns eighty, it's, it's around five thousand. No, our temperature, like a hundred and twenty watts or a hundred and twenty-eight watts.
That'll be like daytime, you know.
Yeah, yeah. I think you can add those ones.
Yeah.
Your?
Everything is flowing.
Sure is flowing.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, we did get our, and I talk outside of school here, but we did get our one sewer department employee back from his... So he is all mended and back, and was, and all the back doors today were first and back, so we should be good.
Anybody have anything else they'd like to preempt? If not, I would mention that our next meeting will be Village Board Workshop. It is next Tuesday. We will have an introductory discussion, I believe, just a general overview in terms of budget. We are completing the process, and the department had some, been asked to turn in their budgets by the fifth of February, which is going to be before the workshop, but we'll have a general overview of things. So if you'd like to attend, that is at seven o'clock. And our next Village Board meeting will be February eighth at seven thirty. And we'll look for you then. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to go into executive session regarding discussions regarding pending litigation brought by Michael Kahn, Polly Kahn, and other persons concerning the village wastewater treatment facility.
I'll make that motion.
Any second.
Trustee Bucking?
Aye.
Trustee Flower?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Don, is, did I hear you say that Iaker is closed? Is that everything?
Okay, it is nine forty, and can I have a motion to come out of executive session?
I'll make that motion.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is nine forty, and can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Lord, yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Evening adjourned.